Consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member.
I move the board approve consent agenda items 4.1 through 4.7.
Second.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and now on to reports from administration.
Yeah, thank you. You'll notice we kind of forego honoring excellence in the months of June and July. We really gave Dallas the evening off, but he's still here, so that shows his dedication. We're going to start off this evening with item 5.1, and that is our Innovation and Learning Report, and we'll welcome Dr. Moore to the podium.
She doesn't run the yard.
I have, I need a little bit more time, so it was really quick, so I will be brief. Several of us in the Innovation and Learning Department just returned from a conference called ISPE, and that's the National Society for Technology Education, and there were ten of us that went, a couple of library and media specialists, our director of library and media services, we had an elementary, a middle, and a high school principal attend, and then the three executive directors and myself, and it was a great opportunity to really focus on artificial intelligence. That was really kind of the big topic, and gave us a lot of clarity on what we will, what professional learning we'll do into this year, really to help teachers and help students use that responsibly, so just wanted to share that, because it was a really good opportunity for us to all come together and plan for the new year with that. Also, summer school wraps up tomorrow. We have a lot of happy students and probably teachers, but we just wanted to thank the operations team in particular, and then human resources, who really helped make the summer go smooth, and our administrators and our teachers, who took the time to teach the kids. We had a lot of great activities, the Creative Arts Academy put on a show, and obviously we had the internships with Network 53, so many different opportunities for our kids, and it went great. Also, since the school year ended, we were able to award 2,485 badges for students in grades of nine through 12 who earned a market value asset, so we're excited that those badges are now available for them in school links. Also, same time, we have several teachers who are attending workshops with the Kaufman Foundation, really focused in on client-connected projects, so that they can come back to their classrooms in the fall, and they are able to embed some of those client-connected projects in their lesson planning. And then finally, we are working again with William Jewels, who are excited about this. Connor Hazelrigg, who runs their Math and Innovation Center, is working with us, and then their new cybersecurity team to host a breakfast for Liberty educators. It will be July 17th, 9:00 to 10:30. I'll send you the flyer, we just sent that out today, we sent it to directors and all high school teachers and all administrators, but just to come and learn about being an entrepreneur, their program that they have, their new cybersecurity, and then how we can continue to work together with William Jewel to provide our students with great opportunities. So as I said, I'll send that, the flyer over to the base to get out to everybody. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions?
I am amazed at the number of books that were checked out.
I know.
That is a large number.
And, like, books. You know, the eBooks number was still high, but the fact that kids still want, like, actual books in their hands is kind of exciting, too.
And it's, I also like that all of the summer school programs are kind of like, like, right there. There's a lot that goes on in summer school. So, thank you for the reports.
I really, really love, I'm not sure if this is the right place to say this, but I loved, I went to see Newsies on Tuesday, because I wasn't at town earlier, just the elementary kids being able to see
Yeah, they love that.
The middle schoolers, not the high school, but almost a little closer to them, and just listening to them talk about it all around me, and then just some of my neighbors and family friend little kids that went to see it. I think that was a really fab, I don't know if they do that all the time, but they seemed to really connect with the fact that that's a little bit closer age for them, and I thought that was really amazing.
To them to be a good audience.
Yes.
Yeah, to sit for that long.
Well, they might not have done such a great job. But, the first hour, they were great.
There may be a bit of an ulterior motive there from the Fine Arts Department.
Yes, absolutely.
In addition to the Newsies performance, jazz choir, and then you saw the art on display as well, so it's been a successful summer school session for the Creative Arts Academy. This is, I believe, year six or seven that we've done that.
Yes, and then for a while.
So thank you to Mr. Hand and Mr. Money.
And always something new, which is great, that they're not doing the same thing every year. Someone did ask a question, can incoming sixth graders, that summer before they're in sixth grade, are they eligible for creative arts? Okay, excellent.
Other questions of Dr. Moore?
Thank you.
Thank you. 5.2 then, we will welcome Dr. Andrea Dixon-Sehorn up for the Student Equity and Access Report.
Good evening, everybody. So good to see you. I wanted to just highlight a couple of things from the Student Equity and Access Report. The first one being that Equity in Schools two-year grant reporting cycle officially closes on Monday, June the 30th. However, we have already completed our report for that two-year grant period and submitted the report, and it has been approved by the foundation in terms of as completed, that we fulfill the requirements of the grant, and they were very, very pleased with the progress that we made, and how we actually used the funds, and how we plan to carry on some pieces of the, what we learned from the grant into next school year, namely our equity role in learning experiences that we plan to continue for our students, eighth grade learners to go to colleges and universities and career centers. So they were very, very impressed with the work that we did here in the public schools. Also, I wanted to share that in student services, and this is just so exciting to report, that with our returning student registration, so you have what's in your report, but I asked the team to pull some numbers as of today, since we made that email campaign on this past Monday, I believe it was, and so we now are at about 56% of families with students who are planning to return for next school year that are now fully registered. Just from the email campaign alone on Monday, about 1,000 families went on ahead and got their kids registered. So this is, this has been already a tremendous success, and so we're just, you know, looking forward to continuing this tradition here with getting that registration process opened up earlier in the year. Also, with respect to students, I'm sorry, special programs and special services, I did mention here that both of those departments are working together very closely to launch, or I guess we should say evolve, our district-wide multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, approach for next year, and so both of those leaders, Dr. Jessica Meisenheimer, Dr. Tony Cook, they've already led an information session with school leaders, they'll hold another one, just as a makeup session for those that were not able to attend, but the whole point of this is to really introduce building MTSS teams that would be able to monitor the different tiers of interventions and supports that students need, and when it gets to a point where extensive supports or intensive supports may be needed, or there may be the need for a special services evaluation, then they can funnel that up to an actual district-level MTSS for district-level special services teams. We're very excited about this process, a new process we implemented starting next year, and already we receive just fan mail, if you will, from school leaders that are excited about having a more structured process, but also district-wide for continuity purposes. So just wanted to share those items, and glad we will take any questions if you have them.
Any questions of Dr. Dixon-Sehorn?
Again, I'm not sure if this is the right place, but in your report was the, had the information about submitting for the Clay County Children's Services Grant, and this isn't the first time that we've done that. Is this something we renew?
This is being renewed.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it is, it is something that, is it every two years? Is that the cycle?
Everything, so this is, we're now in a new two-year cycle.
Right.
Yes.
And so is there any specific criteria that they're looking for? Is this a, as long as we fill it out, we get it?
We, well, I mean, we share with them based on just parameters that they had as a, you know, awarding a grant of kind of what they're looking for districts to do in terms of supporting students, and then we submit the things that we believe would be of support, of a benefit to students, and to my knowledge, most everything we put into the grant, they have said yes, this fits the parameters of the grant.
So this proposal is comparable to the one from two years ago?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
There has been a bit of an evolution with children's services funds across the state, and so something to watch, so then in terms of where those resources are allocated to districts, or to providers, or a combination thereof. So that's one thing, to your point, as to future iterations of this, there might be some shifts. One shift that we saw earlier this year came in to the amount of disbursement, or the amount of funds that were disseminated to each of the LEAs, each of the school districts, and that they've actually pulled that in a little bit, in part because they pushed out a number of grant awards to the tune of X number of dollars, but districts didn't spend all of that amount, and so they're actually drawing that in a little bit. So we're going to watch that pretty closely, but I do want to credit Dr. Jessica Meisenheimer, who works incredibly hard in monitoring this. We actually met this afternoon to discuss our submission, but she's had to convey to some of our team and some various entities that, hey, the funds that we thought we would receive are actually slightly less, and so she's had to trim at the 11th hour in terms of making sure that all of the required asks fit the allocation that we will likely receive, so appreciate her leading that.
Absolutely. And I'll also say that our district is considered to be a model district for all the districts that they do grant these awards to, for just how we utilize those funds. So I probably agree with Dr. Cooper.
They like hearing from Dr. Meisenheimer.
They do, absolutely. She definitely has a fan club with children's services. Absolutely.
Other questions regarding the Student Equity and Access Report?
So when would we expect to hear back on that grant application? What's the timing, I guess, of the cycle of submission to?
We are, we are approved.
It's already approved.
We have some other additional pieces as far as some of the contracts associated with the grant, and then we also have to
We have just approved a bunch of those.
Yeah, that's one piece, and then tomorrow morning, given your action this evening, we have to log into the portal and accept and submit, so that's the final piece as we wrap up this year.
They awarded us the grant amount for what was stated here in the report.
Great, thank you.
Yes, $20 million.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dixon-Sehorn.
Thank you.
Next up, 5.3, Ms. Cindy Sullivan with her finance report.
Good evening. I have
Cindy, can you put the microphone? This fan is really loud, sorry, I have trouble hearing.
Okay. Is that better? Yeah.
I think.
Yes. I have one donation to recognize tonight for you, and it's a monetary donation of $2,300 from Magna, LMB Automotive Systems, to be used for LNH's Special Olympics uniforms, equipment, and awards, so we do appreciate their investment in our Special Olympics program, supporting them with those items. I also wanted to give a shout out, I don't talk much about business services staff and how great they really are, but I have two fairly new payroll people. One has been here for 13 months, and one has been here for nine months, and the first week of June, they run four payrolls, and that's a lot. Normally, on a month, they run four payrolls. So they ran balance of contract checks for July and August, the regular June exempt payroll, and the first of the month non-exempt payroll. So they did that on their own, first time out doing that, and we had help with Crystal Holt House, who now works upstairs, that was formerly in our payroll department, but that's a huge success for them, and I just want to give them a shout out, since they don't talk about their work very often, but I do appreciate them, and those payrolls all went out on Tuesday, and we didn't get any phone calls that we had made mistakes or anything, so they're doing a great job, and I appreciate them, and wanted to express that to you about how good the staff is in the back office, so since I don't talk about them very often. We do also want to celebrate the three Audit and Finance Committee members whose terms are expiring. I'd like to thank Alan Bright, Allison Gardner, and Dennis Picard for their service for the last three years on the committee, and taking their time to report out and look at things on your behalf, and that's a very valuable service that they have provided, so I do appreciate the service of those three members of our community on your behalf. They, Audit and Finance Committee did review documents this year, I had a couple of, or this month, I had a couple of questions about the budget, a couple of questions about the land sale, and someone wanting clarification on student activity accounts, they didn't have anything they wanted to pass on to you, but they did take care and look at those documents for you again this month. We will set their meeting dates once you have selected the next members of the committee after the July meeting, and continue reporting on to you on their behalf. And in addition to my report, that's what I have for you tonight.
Questions of Ms. Sullivan. You're going to hear from her again here in a little bit, so, all right, thank you. Next then, 5.4, Operations Report, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. Couple items I wanted to highlight from the reports that are loaded this month. First of all, I too wanted to kind of echo what Dr. Moore spoke of with respect to summer school, so last day, tomorrow, and it really has been, I think, the best summer we have had in the past many years here with the operations team, and a lot of that is attributed to Dr. Moore's team and our team, meaning like, we'll be probably next month and start to unpack this summer and plan for the next, and with all the departments in interface and transportation, security, and nutrition services, and Kidzone, it's also was compounded by the fact that we were doing a lot of construction this summer, so just it was super challenging, and just appreciate everybody coming together, and it's been a great summer, all things considered. Also wanted to mention that we have summer camp with Kidzone rolling into July, we've got 430 students enrolled, we're able to pull everybody who wanted to be in and accepted in, which is great, so there's no waivers, so we're excited to kind of get that rolling here next week. Also wanted to share with respect to construction, everything's going quite well, we had a long meeting this morning to kind of get an update on all the various projects. The team feels very encouraged, obviously we're running into some hiccups, especially in heritage, which they had kind of anticipated, finding a lot of interesting things in there, and kind of digging into walls and up into ceilings, but everything's going well, and I did ask them if anything of interest or note they're holding on to and they're collecting it, so at some point we'll be able to visit all the good things that they found over time. And we did a little tour today, Dallas and I, we went to the elementary school, under construction, everything's going so well. Liberty Hive, you go to the 400s and 100s wing, it's just wiped out and gone, they've been making great progress, they feel really good about where they're at, so thankful for that. And then the little library building where the three departments are moving in, they're getting ready to move in, probably here in about two weeks, we expect to have occupancy in the middle of next week, so then that's all coming together well, as well. And then last, I think I may have mentioned this last month, I believe I did, I couldn't say this often when I've been speaking to folks, but tomorrow's the last day for Mr. Gary Mayers and Mr. Jeff Baird with Transportation and Security, did want to again acknowledge that and thank them for, I think Jeff was seven years and Gary was nine years of service, and both have done just great work. Jeff has really kind of built the program there and continued to grow it, and Gary, of course, kind of built up from the ground level, kind of a new department for the district, and so wanted to acknowledge them, and then welcome, beginning next week, Mr. Joel Lovell and Mr. Andrew Jones, they've actually been around meeting folks and kind of getting a jumpstart on the year, and just excited to kind of get them started as well. So with that, if you have any questions.
Questions of Mr. Anderson.
What a comprehensive report.
The, as far as, now that we're kind of wrapping summer school up The, as far as now that we're kind of wrapping summer school up and the construction's going on, what's, is there any, I guess, interface, once we hit August, in some of the projects that, that we're concerned about having things ready for mid-August?
So the, the three ones, well, we talked, the three that are probably most sensitive right now are the three elementary schools because we've got to be done and out, right? And they're very invasive and in the way. And they, they're feeling great about those. I mean, they, if we walk, they're cleared out. They're kind of, all the risk is now out of those projects because of all the demo and everything. So now it's just building it back, which goes pretty quickly. They've got, what, five or six weeks? So they feel really good about that. They're ahead of schedule. Heritage is a little bit of a challenge, of course. But again, we're going to be in there with construction while this, while school's in session. So they're focused on the cafeteria area right now because we have to get that buttoned up before they start a school. But then the rest of the, the work, the phase one of the construction, they have that all coordinated off. Right now, there is some asbestos that's remaining. Slowed it down a little bit, but we'll definitely be ready to kind of keep that area that's going to be under construction open while, we'll keep the area under construction while the rest of the school's open. Then Liberty High's the other one. We'll be in that building, I think, through Thanksgiving. And the sped department, fax department, and I think there's part of fine arts department that's been displaced elsewhere in the building. And then as soon as we wrap up the Thanksgiving, around Thanksgiving, we'll move them back in. So everybody feels really good. The folks at the building levels have been obviously part of those conversations and communicating it to their teams. And I think we've kind of covered off everything that needs to be covered off.
And what about traffic access for the three gym locations?
Yeah, we've worked through that. We have a different, a new pattern of traffic at South Valley Discovery. And I could put that in a Friday update next week. But we're going to shift that around for both of those schools. And that might actually carry forward post-construction, kind of flipping that around a little bit. It really works well overall for transportation and I think parent drop-off, but it really will help us during construction. So that's what kind of precipitated the conversation. So that'll be a little bit of a challenge. I think Epic will be fine. I think that's been sectioned off. And we did learn today too, by the way, that Epic Course Lab, which is going to erect the large panels once it's framed up over there, are going to be able to get in at the very end of July for those panels to be set before, because Epic first day, like, the eighth, August, that's on it. So we'll have, we'll have those up before kids reenter the building, which is great.
Thanks for all the numbers. I never really realized what some of the, I know what the departments do, but when you put down how many doses of medication we give out and how many meals we feed out. And it's astounding in the work orders that are done, the amount of work that people do behind the scenes is, is impressive. And thanks for adding those numbers in there.
The team does a great job.
They, they do. I mean, it's a lot of work to get all that in there.
Anything else for Mr. Anderson? Thank you. 5.5, our Human Resources Report with Dr. Sarah Marriott.
Good evening. Just a few data pieces that I wanted to share with you all this evening regarding staffing and where we are currently. We have filled the majority of our positions. We have received a few additional resignations, which precipitates the continued add of open positions. But currently, we have an early childhood position. And we have five middle school, high school positions, which include two credit recovery, alternative education, math, and project lead the way. And then one special education teaching position at the elementary level. But with all of those, there's active plans to fill those positions. So there's a lot of processes and pieces in the works to make sure that there are not any unfilled positions. So we are working through that. Substitute bill rates, I wanted to give some finalized data for the 23, 24 school years. So regarding our teaching, our classroom teaching positions, those were filled at a 95% rate this year, which is excellent. As I had shared with you a few months prior, our paraprofessional rates continue to be a challenge for us, exploring some opportunities with Kelly Services, but that was filled at 66%. And then other positions, which may require a substitute, were filled at 90% this year. So overall, a good year. Regarding the number of certificated teachers that are leaving the district this year, that number has decreased and is at the lowest level since 2021. So we had 73 teachers that retired, resigned from the district, and are moving on for the 24, 25 school year. We also had compliance team members met on June the 13th because there are some new Title IX regulations coming through. And so our team reviewed what information we need to start gathering to be prepared for that. We scheduled our legal training for our team that does the investigations and compliance pieces with Gwen Mundorf to conduct that. And then we're meeting again in a few weeks to determine what other information that we've received, how that needs to be implemented, and then what's information we still need to gather moving forward. And then the last piece I wanted to share is that we have gathered a cross-disciplinary team to start some discussions about staff well-being at a broad level. And so this first meeting was essentially just kind of some brainstorming. We talked about some perceived challenges, increasing awareness of some district-sponsored services that we have, and then discussing some proactive measures versus reactive measures. And so we're planning to meet again in July and have a few items that we'll work through in the meantime to hopefully bring additional awareness to what services and offerings that we do have at the district level. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I'm really glad you're doing that. Thank you.
Of course.
And one of the things to point out too on that note, since you mentioned that Rebecca Fisher has worked with us in multiple capacities. Previously was assigned to the district through Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then we liked her so much that we actually incorporated her into our LPS staff. And so she has worked as an LPS Wellness Coordinator along this line. And is an invaluable resource in connecting dots for resources for people, but then also helping staff navigate questions they might have from a health insurance standpoint. So appreciate the team diving into that as far as what more can be done in and around well-being for our employees. Other questions of Dr. Marriott?
I did observe the, the numbers in terms of reduction of certified teachers in terms of, of the number that, I didn't look at the five years, but I noticed it was a lot lower. Last year seemed like it was 129 and 75 at this point in time. Just a question for you. I think some of it's post-COVID. That's my observation. Can't prove that yet. But is, are there other factors? The raises made a difference? Question.
I would anticipate, and that is an assumption, we haven't gathered information about why people elected to stay other than some, well, we did gather some stay interview data, but not to the extent that it was a broad representation. But I would make the assumption that the raises was a significant factor and that potentially people who were considering retirement prior to the raise made the decision to stay on an additional three years to boost their retirement. So I do think that that was a significant factor, as well as we continue to really have, you know, really abundant benefits packages for our team members too, you know, so health insurance is a priority. And that could be a reason that they want to stay employed and continue with the district. And then, you know, the team has shared, and I've shared before, the reputation of the district, I think, is a factor too.
I heard that in some other meetings this afternoon.
Well, we also have, for lack of a better word, a heat map of all of our staff as it lays across our salary schedules. So years of experience. And so there is a breakdown of staff, let's say, on the certificated side, you know, within the first five years or 10 or 15, 20, 25. And so you can look at those numbers in a, in a unscientific way, kind of see what's coming as people get into those different phases. I don't know that I'm doing justice to that, Ms. Sullivan, as far as the document itself, but it does allow for some predictability.
Placed in bands-
Yeah.
-across the experience years, and you will see how the waves will be potentially rolling off as we move.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions of Dr. Marriott? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lastly then, as far as the superintendent's report, both Julie and Steve beat me to it. But thank you to everyone that helped with summer school and serving nearly 6,000 students. Someone asked me the other day in passing if that's credit recovery, if it's acceleration, if it's enrichment. And the answer is it's all of the above. And that students do take advantage of virtual options, face-to-face options, enrichment opportunities. And then we also know that going into the month of July, we continue to service students through our special programming as it relates to extended school year. So for the supports that those students need, those just continue over the course of the remaining parts of the summer. But again, thanks to our students, family, staff, and our administrators for a successful summer school program. Mr. Marriott and I were talking earlier that summer isn't quite what it used to be, which is indicative of the reports that you heard earlier, whether it's construction, whether it's summer school, whether it's planning for the coming year in terms of finalizing a budget, which gets us to our strategic plan and the work that our community, and I'll give credit to them, engaged in and finalizing our strategic plan. We'll talk a little bit about that in a bit. In addition to the strategic plan, I wanted to tease out a draft vivid vision, so you'll see that this evening, along with some additional detail that falls into that category of collaboration with family and stakeholders. So you have a description of our engagement plan and our intent of operationalizing that through our strategic plan a little bit later as we start the fall semester. You also have information pertaining to the Success Ready Students Network. That is taking shape, and it's been busy this summer working through that, really in three components. One is identifying what the performance indicators look like within the Success Ready Students Network. Secondly is what an alternative annual performance report will look like and kind of its components that align to the Missouri standards, based on those 20 districts participating in the Innovation Waiver. And then lastly, what a continuous improvement framework will look like. I've also included some next steps or timeline of dates to be, be aware of. One is actually this week in the submission of a report to the State Board of Education as far as an update. Another key date is coming up in August, in which at the State Board meeting, we'll have a couple of presentations, presentation from those first round of districts that are participating in the Innovation Waiver, but then another round of districts that'll be moving forward and soliciting an additional waiver request to join the work of the Success Ready Students Network from that standpoint in terms of receiving the Innovation Waiver. So we'll continue to bring more information to you later this fall. You can anticipate being provided as a school district that's part of Success Ready Students Network, an alternative APR, which I believe will be more robust, will look more at growth throughout the course of the year from August through May, rather than solely a standardized assessment score at the end of the school year. So we look forward to bringing information. But then also, equally important, is communicating and messaging that to our staff and to our family, the similarities, but then also the differences in looking at an alternative annual performance report. With that said, would open it up for any questions you all have of me this evening.
There were busy. Busy month.
Yeah, sure.
All right, on to unfinished business.
We're going to welcome Ms. Cindy Sullivan back up to the podium. And as she's coming, just a reminder for you all in our community as well, we start our budget conversations, really they don't stop, but we really start them off in January as it relates to planning, but then bringing forward information for you in segments over the course of the spring semester, whether it's anticipated revenue, expenditures in March and April, a preliminary budget in the month of May. And then certainly here we are this evening. So again, thank you to Cindy and her leadership. In addition, the Business Services Team, but also, we call them budget managers, whether it's principals or directors that have oversight specifically for their department or building level budgets. So a ton of work has gone into getting us to where we're at this evening. Also appreciate the board for diving in, as well as the Audit and Finance Committee. So we'll turn it over to Ms. Sullivan.
I also want to add to the list of thank yous, the building and department managers, administrative assistants, because they spend a lot of time with those budget managers and are just as much in it as the managers are. So I appreciate all of those people Dr. Tucker mentioned, as well as the administrative assistants. And I specifically want to call out John Maloney from Business Services and Lily Solbridge, my administrative assistant, because they carry the bulk of the documents that is presented to you. And they do the bulk of that work. So I appreciate their work, their hard work, putting this all together for you. So we presented you tonight with the completed document as well as a snapshot of the changes from the preliminary document. And as you can see, we did increase revenue by $276,000, all in the operating fund. And we decreased expenditures by almost $1.3 million spread between operating and capital. So that gets our overall revenue budget at $221,931,314. And operating revenue at $193,636,855. Overall expenditures are $279,253,978. And operating expenditures at $195,205,66. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the changes or about the documents that was provided to you.
It is an impressive amount of work.
Thank you.
And I feel like even if you don't get finance, you understand this. And so it's easy to read.
I think it's a very important document for people. And I love the way that you, that you lay everything out. I know a lot of this is mandated by the state in some ways in terms of what needs to be in here, but it's accessible. And, and I love that this is something that members of our public can go to and look at and just see and review. And I also really love that you break it up over a series of months so that we can digest it a little bit. By the time we get to this point, we've seen this a lot of times with the tweaks.
Yes, thank you.
And I said this last year, but the changes from the preliminary budget, that, that sheet is easiest for me to look at. So I mean, that's super helpful because we haven't talked about this so much. But see it on one page, know where we're at. Appreciate everybody's work and efforts. And back to the point of summers are not what they used to be, I know. This is a crazy time of year for, for your group, so thank you.
Glad that's helpful. Any other questions? There's a motion.
I move the board adopt the 2024-2025 district budget.
Second.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Curriculum approval?
6.2, a couple of curriculum approvals we shared with you back in May for first read. That includes foreign language curriculum, PE, as well as health. So you have those presented to you this evening for your consideration. Anything to add on those as far as updates, Dr. Moore?
Not since last month, no minimal changes, as I mentioned before. I just want to thank the heads of state and Dr. Schmitz for helping put this together.
Present that to you for your consideration.
Any questions?
I move the board adopt a foreign language, PE, and health curriculum as presented.
Second.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And board policy updates.
We do have one cleanup item, which is a procedural piece tied to action the board took previously this semester. And that is regarding grants, specifically board policy DD, but procedure DD-AP1. You'll notice at the bottom of that, just the insertion of terminology as far as board action or board approval on grants. And so we made that change to our procedures, just sharing that with you this evening for informational purposes. No action needed in that regard. But that was a piece that was kind of hanging out there that we wanted to make sure and rectify. So would share that with you as an informational item only this evening.
Questions? Comments? New business?
7.1 is an annual requirement, this being the first year moving forward in terms of that annual requirement. Because you'll recall- that annual requirement, because you'll recall, this time last year, we were scurrying with the help of our various leaders in the district and community members in developing a district engagement plan. And so we were able to meet that requirement last year. Have been working on that some over the course of this year, knowing that we would be refreshing our strategic plan. And as we shared earlier, that has found its way into our strategic plan as an area of focus. And so what you have this evening is just that annual approval. It looks very similar, in fact, identical to our engagement plan last year. But we'll couple with that the incorporated action plans under the strategic plan in terms of better engagement experiences, opportunities, and a variety of ways across our system. To give you a little of a foreshadowing, our intent is to really work closely with our directors and principals, and that is kind of the front lines of engagement, whether it be the building level or the services provided through our departments. So we'll be working on that as soon as the strategic plan is approved moving forward. And then you'll again see that as an annual requirement in terms of board action on our engagement plan, so would share that with you for your consideration.
Questions, comments?
I move the board approve the LPS Community Engagement Plan.
Second. Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have a couple of additional annual requirements for consideration. The next one is 7.2, and that's the 24-25 Professional Development Plan. Again, appreciate Dr. Moore and her team, Innovation and Learning, and others across the system, in ensuring high-quality professional development for our staff, be it embedded into the course of the day through early release time on Wednesdays, or through some of our professional development half-days or full-days, or sending people to conferences, as she mentioned, with ISTI and the opportunity to present and so forth. But would share that for your consideration this evening. Anything to add to that, Dr. Moore, as far as the refresh?
There are really no changes from previous iterations of this. The main important pieces, if you want to look at anything, are really the links on the back that show who are the people who are doing a lot of the work. So you have your curriculum council, you have your district PDC, you have your PDC chairs, and then you've got the budget there, which shows what we will be using our 1% money from the state for this next year.
I did find it interesting. I mean, I appreciated you putting in, without attribution, the comments from teachers about what kind of professional development they would like to see, and I was pleasantly surprised at how many of them were wanting more professional development on AI. And then, of course, to hear that you all just came back from a conference, it's great that you're responding to that and looking for ways to incorporate that, so.
Our goal is really to take our in-house experts more so. So you'll see, if you look at the budget, it's about $200,000 less than it was last year. We did put some of that in our curriculum budget, but we really thought we like the train-the-trainer models and get some people to come back and share. So having library media specialists who are really invested in the AI piece, be able to come back and then share that, and then we'll work with the coaches and have training at each building so that every teacher is getting the same message across the system, and every teacher is getting the same training, instead of doing it for 10 people and then hoping that it gets spread, that every single teacher will get that information.
I appreciate all the numbers. For some reason, the numbers are hitting my sweet spot this month. I don't know why, maybe just because. But I also like having those links so that if there's more information that I'm really wondering what it is, I can click in and get the more specifics. But the numbers are, the amount of time teachers spend and staff spend on professional development is pretty impressive. And that, I think, says good things about our staff and things for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was looking at, I think it's a survey from our retreat, and so I've been reading some of that, and GD, I think completely G and D.
G and D Associates.
Yeah. Well, anyhow, strongly agree and agree. Most of the time it was agree, which was a positive, and disagree was less. I don't know that I've seen any situation, but there was almost a tie regarding AI. And so it tells me that that truly is a hot button issue.
For sure.
That we've got to be on top of, because this was parents, and I believe parents and staff's response, and it was contentious based on the numbers. So I'm sure you've seen.
A side connection there is when it comes to the governance side, as far as, you know, what does an ideal AI policy look like? And so we have some draft language we're looking at in terms of effectuating that, moving that forward. Back to what Ms. Rogers was sharing as far as kind of the feedback from staff and what they desire, keep in mind every year we do a needs assessment, which is really the valuable piece, coupled with the funding, right, that we provide, but the valuable piece is ensuring that we're responding to what we're hearing among our staff. An area that we've probably not done as good of a job in is when we get over into the support staff, and so that's an area of focus and conversation that we've had, and then how can we do an equally good job at ensuring that, A, we assess what they want and what they need, and then B, you're responsive to that through professional development or learning opportunities for that support side of what we do, so.
Are you talking about peer professionals there, or more broader, like, front office staff, or?
All of the above.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And we do have that as a goal on our strategic plan, so we'll be working on that. Several, our department, with several of Steve's department leaders, student equity and access, HR, all of them, just to make sure that everybody's getting what they need.
I move the board approve the 2024-2025 Professional Development Plan.
Second.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Student handbook.
It's been a few sleeps since we had this conversation back in August of last year, but you'll recall, we had some questions around the interplay between policy and handbooks, how often things are revised, and that there had been some antiquated terminology specifically around student dress code, that then got us to thinking about how often or frequently do we look at, revise, update a variety of documents, knowing that as we update board policies, those change throughout the year, that then those that fold into or impact our student handbooks, those changes then are message to staff, message to leaders, message to students or parents as needed. And so we want to get into this annual routine of approving our student handbooks, and so you have that presented to you this evening with some pretty nominal changes, as Dr. Moore was preparing that for this evening. But we do have an additional piece we wanted to mention, and that is specifically changes that you will see in procedure. Once we get into July, as far as JFCA-AP1, that is the one that is specific to dress code, and that there were about four areas we wanted to hone in on and revise, because they included terminology like Bermuda shorts, right? Nothing bad against the Bermuda shorts, that's my wheelhouse, but gives you an indication of when I grew up. But we do have about four changes that we're working with MSBA on revising that you'll see later on, that then will be linked to the student handbooks, that then will be messaged to administrators, to staff, to students, and to families, specifically as it relates to dress code. So you have the various handbooks provided to you this evening, the Early Childhood Center, a separate elementary handbook that covers all of our elementary campuses, middle school that hits on our four middle schools, and then our high school that incorporates the two high schools, as well as Liberty Academy. What else would you add to that, Dr. Moore?
It's perfect.
Okay. Would just share that to you this evening for your consideration, and again, going forward, we'll bring that forward this time of year each year. Some years we may have a significant overhaul, other years it may not be as significant.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this forward, and I mean, there was a few things that, as I read through this as fast as I possibly could, I was glad to see, I was looking for the grad, different grade, graduation and diploma things, and got that in there, it looks like, so that's great to see. I was curious, there is some statement in the high school about phone policy, there's nothing in middle school that I found.
There is something in there. I can't tell you what page it's on, but I did look, because I was just going back to make sure that at the elementary and the middle school level that they don't, but it's not when you type in, like I was typing it in to look for it, and I can't remember what it's under, but I can send it to you, but it's something short. Now, what they do also is they go at the beginning of the year, but since they do not allow cell phones, they have something more in depth they go through with the students. But it very much says that only with teacher permission are they allowed in there.
There's something, if you go under technology?
Yes.
Under electronic devices?
Starts on page nine.
There's information under there.
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's very generic, and then it's because it sticks to the board policies, and then the schools do have some other documentation that they share with students and parents to say that the cell phones are not allowed, and that goes for the elementary and the middle school.
Yeah, I guess something to consider in the future is trying to align those two so that whatever, I guess if we're saying one thing in the middle?
Sure.
Let's stick with it unless there's a reason otherwise. I guess my feeling on this, and it goes back to last fall, sitting in on a discussion about phones in schools, but I guess it makes me a little concerned that it seems that we, A, allow it for building decisions, and then classroom decisions, and I guess we're generic enough that we provide ourselves the opportunity to kind of regulate it, but that's not really a, the consistency wouldn't be there, which is something that we try to do across, you know, the district when we can. And I guess that's the direction, I'm not ready to say, let's just have a policy of no phones, but it does feel like there's room to get more consistency, and anyway, the hand, I guess the other piece, and this is kind of all, the handbook is the only place where this is discussed? There is no policy, there's no AP. This is the only place that cellphone in school buildings is discussed, is the handbook?
That's correct, to my knowledge. I'd have to go back and see if any of it's incorporated into our technology usage agreements.
That's what I was going to say.
It is.
Probably some original tech use agreement.
It may be tied there. The other piece, and Dan's hit it, as far as consistency in handbook and what's messaged in front of students, for example, and what's contained in the handbook, so we need to shore that up, it sounds. The other piece, just to highlight, if you're following things nationally, there's quite a bit of attention around this subject, on kind of some extremes, local districts that are just kind of taking it on and changing things, or shoring things up between elementary, middle, and high school, because there are some delineation and some differences there, all the way to state legislatures getting involved in this and enacting legislation. So something certainly to watch. It obviously is like any type of technology, it has its good purposes and good uses, and then it also has some nefarious aspects. So I think looking ahead, we want to make sure that we're messaging in our handbook what we're messaging to staff or students, you know, as we're standing in front of them at a beginning of the school year with staff, or student orientation into the high school or middle school or high school. The other piece, and we know this as administrators, it's all about enforcement. Every single one of our policies that tie to our student handbooks all come down to enforcement, and that's something we want to make sure that we're consistent in all of our policies tied to the student handbooks.
Yeah, I just think as a parent, you know, I'd like to have something, say, see, this is right there.
Sure, that's right.
But it doesn't, and then it has to go to the building, and then you go to the building, well, it's up to the classroom, and, well, I'm not going to ask every single teacher.
Yeah.
And so then, then I feel like, like I'm a teenager as the, it's one up on.
Add another element to that, add another element to that, and that a lot of our young people are wearing watches.
Right.
So it's one thing about a cellphone, and it's another thing about a companion Apple Watch or, you know, electronic device.
I don't know if this is actually fact, that some teachers use apps, cellphone apps, or ask kids to use cellphone apps, and that always kind of annoyed me a little bit, like, can we find a way not to use apps that they can only have on their phone, or that they mostly have on, can they be apps that are on their electronic device instead of their phone?
Sure.
And so that was one thing I remember. I don't know anymore, I don't follow along that closely with Jack, but I know when Anna was in school, I'd say, you're not allowed to have your phone, but the teacher is using this app, and it's on the phone, and I said, well, what happens to kids who don't have a phone if the teacher is using that app? Anyway, I don't know if we have a policy to not have teachers use apps.
No, not specifically to that end.
That might be.
The other, the other commonality between this, and this is a kind of a red thread throughout any technology conversation, is the importance of teaching responsible use, right? So as we think about AI, there are some people that are of the opinion, hey, shut it down entirely and don't allow access, but what a, what better place to learn about it and how to leverage and use it responsibly? So there's that train of thought, too.
Yeah.
And it may look different, like we've talked about, at the elementary, the middle, and the high school level, right? Because kids are ready for different things, both from a curriculum, but then also from a technology standpoint, so.
I just think it's hard to say, no phones, but then?
For sure.
The app is something that you're pulling out in class to do on your phone, so.
Well, and it can be revolutionary. I mean, when I was in high school marching band, the way we learned our formations was on these grid charts that the band director put little dots for each one of us down, and now the bands use an app that is amazing, because my son can see where his dot is on the field, and not only just in terms of stacks of paper, but can move, show the movement of him in the formation. It's amazing. So I don't think any of us want to shut that down, but just making sure that we're doing it in a way that's clear guidance and that we're enforced, going back to enforcement, like what you were saying.
To kind of a broader point, I mean, I'm assuming these handbooks are done in conjunction with discussions with our building leaders in terms of kind of those updates. And then, I mean, I think the most important thing is we're, you know, if we're looking at them each year, we're getting those updates from policies, regulations that happen yearly, but have some uniformity there, but with the understanding that anything that causes a material substantial disruption in the educational environment, which could be cellphone use, is covered in that handbook language, we're providing notice to kids. So I mean, there's some discretion there, but I mean, I think that's something that if we're, you know, hearing from building level, the disruption of cell phones, and that's something that we need to look at broader, more uniformly, then let's talk about it, but, you know, I get kind of both sides. I mean, the AI issue and the technology issue is, let's teach kids how to use these things and, you know, with academic integrity, so.
Do we have AirPods on there, too, somewhere? Because those are really distracting. So I do think that what we can do, because all of these, last year, we did work to tie them directly, as Drew said, to the board policy, because there were so many changes each year, and I think when I first got to central office, I looked at these, and we had a sped director that was, that had been here like 10 years prior, and then May was still, so it was harder to keep up, so we thought tying it to the board policy where it gives that leniency, but then at the same time with something like the cellphone. It is tied to the technology usage, but what we could do is with some of these, is that the elementary and the middle school, I'll say, put a, something in there that says, you know, cell phones are not allowed in class, and then at the high school, they are allowed, they are, they do use them in some classrooms, and we do have students coming and going all the time, so I feel like it's important to teach them how to use them responsibly, but we can alter that language a little bit, so it's clear to parents instead of looking in and having to click on a policy and.
Right.
What does our device mean?
Yeah, and I, I mean, this area, I mean, you brought up, you know?
AirPods.
AirPods, I mean, we both have talked about AI.
Sure.
I mean, those are things, most likely, those are types of things that do need to go in more so than Bermuda shorts.
It will evolve. That is for sure.
This year, they do.
Anything else?
I move the board approve the 2024-2025 student handbooks.
Second. Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Meal prices.
Another annual item, 7.4 is our 2024-2025 meal prices. And you have a informational description that was uploaded, kind of walking us through that, along with a bit of a grid that shows the breakdown over the last several years by line item, be it breakfast for students, adults, lunch, students and adults, as well as our milk prices. So that's presented to you this evening for your consideration. Mr. Anderson, you want to walk through any of this with us?
I was just going to say, this is, every year, we do this in June, and it's really a matter of compliance, and then this formula that we really have to lean on, and it just kind of generates what, an outcome. And in this case, just succinctly, breakfast pursuits are going up, I think a dime, and, no, I'm sorry, five cents. And then lunches are going up 10. The adult meals, obviously, we'll, we'll move those up as is necessary, and the milk holds steady. So, you know, with the two-year gap, they showed on the, with COVID, that kind of had a little bit of effect, because we had to come out of there and adjust with inflation. But this is just kind of one of those things that's more or less is what it is. Would appreciate your approval tonight.
Questions?
I move the board, I'm sorry.
Go.
I move the board approve the 2024-2025 meal prices.
Second. Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Strategic planning.
You have two items underneath this agenda item this evening, the first of which is our 24-25 Strategic Plan, which you've been involved in over the course of the semester and had some preview to at our earlier board retreat this month. Couple highlights from that I'll share in just a second. We also have uploaded, and I'll emphasize draft, of our LPS, LPS Vivid Vision that reflects the areas identified in our strategic plan. It actually, it reflects additional feedback received from our community. And so we haven't pulled all of those items into our strategic plan, but in the future, moving forward, as we identify accomplishments, additional items annually that we want to incorporate in the strategic plan, we pull that from the Vivid Vision. And so you may recall our previous Vivid Vision. We went back to Guild Collective, and we redesigned the document, but it is very similar, and that is a narrative that then accompanies that strategic plan in the areas of teaching, leadership, learning, professional learning for the adults in our organization, but then also that community dynamic. That then gets us into the strategic plan. And what you have uploaded this evening, that then you'll again see in July for second read and action, your consideration if the board chooses, is a three-page, front-facing, forward-facing, public-facing plan that incorporates the area as far as the vision area, followed by vision statements, and then deliverables, who the individual identified among our strategic leadership team is, that is the owner or, or co-owners of those particular plans, if there's an associated budget allocation, an anticipated due date as to when we anticipate each of those plans being completed, and then a project title. What is not public-facing is more of our working documents, and those are associated to each of our plan numbers. We have about 27 plans that are part of our strategic plan, of which is monitored and operationalized by our strategic leadership team, consisting of about 13 of our central office leaders. And so, again, you've seen this, but would share that this evening with you to take a look at. If you have questions or need clarification between now and our July meeting, we're certainly welcome to help answer those questions or provide clarification for you. Keep in mind, moving forward, this is not a fixed five-year or 10-year plan. This is something that we monitor every other week as a strategic leadership team, and then we incorporate it into our board reports and program evaluations, reports from the administration. In addition, we review it annually in the fall. And so fast forward in August, if approved by the board in July, it will start, roll over the course of the 24-25 school year. We will come back to you in the fall of 2025 to celebrate accomplishments, but then also to refresh that plan. And that, so much changes so quickly. Case in point with our conversation around AI and readying for what the future looks like as far as public education. So would share that with you this evening. But again, welcome any questions that you have in the coming weeks, and we'll see that again in July at our July 23 regular monthly board meeting.
I would just like to know, who came up with the headings for the specific sections? I really like them, that we're not just talking about learning and teaching and leadership, but we have other words along with those that I think help cast that into a very positive, upbeat way to put those things on a piece of paper. So I'm going to read that, you've drawn me in with those.
Couple things there, with the column headers themselves, that is in part working with GND and Associates. The content is credited in two ways. One, to the community for identifying through their feedback that we've received, our surveys and focus groups, conversations with board members and staff and students that then informed, like the content that you're seeing. Strategic leadership team, then, those individuals that are part of that team worked with Scott Fuller, our consultant, to wordsmith and actually come up with the phraseology, so to speak. Similarly, within each and every one of our action plans, it's our school district leaders that put pen to paper in trying to reflect through an action plan the feedback that we're hearing from our community. So it is a significant amount of work, but then you also have to translate that into a narrative or a story like what we see in our Vivid Vision. So all of those pieces, coupled with our graduate profile and our learner progressions, really kind of serve as that North Star for our district. Okay? Again, you'll see that in July, so.
Item pulled from the consent agenda.
I had one item as a reimbursement for expenses tied to the National School Boards Association Conference in the amount of $242.30 for Mr. AJ Byrd. The check number is issued there, you can see that there, and have motion language for your consideration this evening.
I move the board approve check number 724884 to AJ Byrd in the amount of $242.30 for reimbursement of expenses at the NSBA conference.
Second. Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Abstain.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay.
I had some, I had some questions.
We could have had them leave the room.
That's true.
Thought about it, AJ, thought.
I spent the money.
Contracts.
Last item under new business, a few contracts, purchases, and bids, and we'll turn that over to Mr. Anderson to share that update.
Yeah, both of these items are under the expedited or emergency purchase policy. And really just two items that came up after the last meeting that we needed to formalize before this one. The first is with Copland Coal Chain LLP, and it's with Nutrition Services kind of renewing their support program for the refrigeration systems that we have with all of our freezers and refrigeration across the district. Then the second is with Children's Mercy with respect to an agreement regarding student participation with their experiences at the hospital. Appreciate gratification of both of those tonight.
How old are the students doing those, involved in Children's Mercy? I think?
Junior.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to ask.
I move the board approve the emergency contracts as presented.
Second.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Board of Education, anything on legislation and advocacy for anyone?
When we were at the summer summit, Angie and I attended the MSBA Summer Summit this week, and there was a legislative update, and then specifically a SB 727 update, and just talk of that there will need to be a supplemental appropriation session to come up with all of the money that has been promised. To watch for that.
Lots of upcoming dates. Thanks for putting like the year's calendar right there, please. That's a lot.
I think with some of the legislative updates from other organizations as well, I mean, one of the things is that with 727 passing, we, you know, part of what we need to do is make sure there is accountability for, you know, appropriating that for the budget and funding it, because the concern is if those things don't get appropriated, then what gets cut, right? So.
I think it's fair to say that it was a fairly concerned room on that count.
Yeah.
Board remarks? Any comment for the good of the order? All right, adjourn. Moment.
I move the board adjourn.
Second.
Jen?
Yes.
AJ?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Drew?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all, have a happy Fourth of July.
Might have been.
It could be.
Pretty close. You know, I think what put us over was the discussion of handbooks.
I know.